Calling the order, the November 6th, 2024, City Council Meeting. Please rise and we'll recite the Fledge of Allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and the clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Sattel?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
We have all eight council members present tonight. Next item on the agenda will be the Agenda Approval.
Make a motion for approval.
So moved. Second?
Motion's made and seconded for the approval of tonight's agenda. We do have a like. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make one combined motion for two different areas. I make a motion to remove or delete Bill 6462 under Section L, Perfection of Bills, and instead add a bid acceptance for a stormwater pipe under Section K, Emergency Legislation, Contracts and Bids.
Second?
Okay. Motion is made and seconded to delete Bill Number 6462 under Perfection of Bills and to add a bid acceptance under Item K on tonight's agenda. Any other changes? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Thank you. The agenda is approved as amended. Oh, motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for the approval of the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. The agenda as amended is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comments. First, I must tell you the guidelines. They shall be substantially as follows. Statements shall be confined to the business of the city and shall be limited to the substance of the business present. Statements shall not contain offensive words. No person may make any derogatory or inflammatory statements about any other person or make any political statements or speech. Each person may speak for three minutes. We have one this evening. Mr. Mike Pinson, please come forward.
Yes, Mike Pinson, 11420 Old St. Charles Road. And before I speak, Mayor, you're gonna repeat those guidelines to the council before they speak, correct?
I didn't say I was, no.
Well, wouldn't it be appropriate to have the same agenda to them?
Only if it's in the council rules and it is not in there at this time.
So, okay. Very good. Anyway, I'm coming here tonight. I passed through on the way to the meeting tonight, the new reader board. And of course, I had trouble reading it. I'm thinking, well, hopefully, I can come up here to the council and find somebody or some help for the Park Department to do that. And basically, as I look around, I don't see anybody that can help them. So maybe you're gonna have to hire somebody, Mayor, to train some people to operate the reader board. Thank you. I'll sit down.
Thank you. Okay. No further public comments. I see none. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the special council meeting of October 16, along with the regular minutes from the City Council Meeting of October 16. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion is made and seconded to approve both sets of minutes. Do I have any changes? deletions, friendly amendments? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, I'll need to abstain since I was absent.
Okay. We have seven council members in favor and one abstaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Your minutes are approved for both meetings from October 16. Next item on the agenda, G. First, I want to introduce a new police or fire chief from Robertson Fire Protection District, Chief Robert Severs.
Hi, guys. Good evening, councilor. But yes, my name is Robert Severs. I recently got promoted in October and am the new fire chief for Robertson Fire Protection District. It's an honor to be meeting at the helm of the fire district here and continue to grow and everything. Everything right now is pretty, running pretty smoothly. I'm just learning more about my job and getting settled in. If you encounter members or anybody in the public meets anything, don't hesitate to contact me and talk about it. So I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. The city clerk laid a one-page announcement or appointment for a couple of board and commission members. The first one from the Board of Adjustment and alternate Scott Zimmer, and the second one for the Pension Commission, Cindy Lay. I would like your favorable approval, these two residents for these commissions and board.
Moved to accept the plate as listed.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded to approve the two appointments. Scott Zimmer, Board of Adjustment, and Cindy Lay, Pension Commission. Roll call.
Kathy Iwannu?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Iwannu. Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sattel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Okay. By a vote of eight to nothing, the two board and commission members are appointed. Thank you. Next, under Item G. So per Aaron Mara with Gilmore and Bell, the following directors were appointed in 2020, and they're up for reappointment. And she's asking for favorable approval from City Council for reappointment of these two members for the Hilltop CID, which is Community Improvement District. One is for a four-year term. Dennis LaRue, the second one also for a four-year term. Robert Jackubek.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded to approve these two Hilltop CID directors for four-year terms, Dennis LaRue and Robert Jackubek. Roll call move.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sattel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwannu?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, the two appointments or reappointments are made for the Hilltop Community Improvement District. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna recess for a public hearing. I'm gonna call to the podium, Zach Graytons. This is regarding Number 24-PZ-06 for a special use permit at 12344 Natural Bridge Road. Please state your name and address to the city clerk.
Zach Graytons, Planning and Zoning Officer, City of Bridgeton, 12355 Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044.
Proceed.
Yes. Oh, do I need to be sworn in, correct?
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Proceed.
I have a list of exhibits that I'll read for the record. This is pertaining to Application 24-PZ-06, as the mayor stated, at 12344 Natural Bridge Road. The exhibits include a copy of the report to the mayor and city council members from the Planning Commission dated October 25, 2024; a copy of the staff report to the Planning Commission dated October 10, 2024; a copy of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the meeting held on October 14, 2024; the site plan associated with the request; and by reference, the zoning ordinance, Ordinance Number 70-25, with amendments through January 17 of 2024. And I've had those exhibits marked by the court reporter.
Please accept those into the record.
So I've got some slides here to just summarize the applicant's request. As the mayor stated, this is 24-PZ-06. It's a request to amend a special use permit that was approved by Ordinance 12-43 for outdoor seating and dining at a restaurant and bar located at 12344 Natural Bridge Road in the B2 Community Business District. The applicant's request is to expand the hours that were limited by that special use permit. This item, this application, went before the Planning Commission for a public hearing at their October 14, 2024 meeting. The Planning Commission recommended in favor, by a vote of seven in favor and three opposed, with conditions. A little bit of information about the property. This is in the strip center, commercial strip center located across the street from City Hall. I've got the tenant space highlighted in red on this map. This commercial center consists of a mix of commercial uses ranging from service to restaurant to retail. The surrounding land uses include City Hall across Natural Bridge to the north and restaurant, church and post office to the east, daycare and auto repair to the south is a warehouse, and to the west, additional retail and service, commercial uses. The property is zoned B2. It is surrounded by B2 property to the west, north and east, and M3D, a planned manufacturing district, to the south. As I mentioned, the, this restaurant, they're currently operating under the previously approved special use permit, 12-43, approved in 2012. That special use permit included three conditions of approval for outdoor seating and dining. It limited to maximum of three tables with four chairs each. It was specified that the tables had to be placed against the building wall with the chairs arranged on the east and west sides of the tables, and that was to prevent overcrowding into the pedestrian area, and that the tables would be allowed to be outside, tables and chairs outside, between 10:00 a.m. and dusk, and they had to be brought in at dusk every day. The applicant for this amendment, what they are requesting is two items ultimately. They are requesting to allow outdoor seating and dining to be permitted until midnight, seven days a week, so extending it from dusk to midnight, all seven days a week. And their other component of their request is that the tables would be allowed to remain and that only the chairs be brought in overnight. Those are the two elements of their request. On review of the proposal, in terms of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, it designates this area as commercial, so there's no conflict there. Again, the use of the property is still going to remain a restaurant and bar, so there's no significant change to traffic generation, and there's sufficient parking on the site. As stated previously, this area has a mix of commercial and institutional land uses. So I'll summarize the conditions. So these were, at the recommendation of staff, if this amendment were to be approved, these were the recommended conditions to try to help address any issues with congregating and keeping control of the outside seating and dining. So the first one would limit it to being permitted from 2:00 p.m. until midnight. The second condition, with a maximum of three tables, four chairs each, similar to the previous special use permit. Tables be placed against the building with chairs on the east and west sides of the table. The third one, that outside seating shall be for patrons to the restaurant, seated in chairs at tables for consumption of food and beverages purchased from the establishment, and that the sidewalk area shall not be used for congregating of patrons. The fourth condition that was listed addressed clear pedestrian access. This is the one, the condition that stated a maximum of six feet for pedestrians to still walk through this area at all times. Five, that tables may be left in approved locations overnight, but the chairs must be removed at midnight. The sixth one was that the owner of the establishment shall use signage where appropriate to inform patrons regarding the time and location for the outside seating and dining. And the seventh, that the sidewalk area shall be kept free of trash and litter at all times. Another item, oh, sorry, I didn't have that slide up. Another item that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting was, Chief Masadi had provided comments in the report that was distributed to the Planning Commission and to you all, just addressing his concerns with the hours and the congregating and some of the issues that that has led to in the past. So that was included in the packet for you all to read. Another item that was discussed by the Planning Commission was the idea of requiring a fence or not. There's an establishment to the east that has a four-foot fence installed. Ultimately, the Planning Commission decided not to include any requirement for that. One of the main concerns being that could that possibly invite more congregating of patrons where, in which people would maybe sit on the fence or sit on the railing. So ultimately, the Planning Commission did not include that in there among the conditions. A few pictures of the site. This shows the, this is the front of the establishment, the entrance door on the right-hand side there. There is, and I've got some information on dimensions too. It's, from the wall to the back of the curb is 13 feet. So that's where staff came up with the requirement to allow at least six feet of clear space for pedestrian access. And then this last slide here, this is an approximate. This is not to scale. This just kinda shows the general idea of what they're asking for, the location of tables and chairs. Just to the, I guess that'd be the east of the door, only in front of their space, maintaining six feet of pedestrian access at all times. That's all I have. Are there any questions for me?
Councilmember Hood?
Yes, I think the purpose of the fence at the other establishment down the street was to actually provide a marker for the patrons so that they knew that they were only permitted to be inside that area. And I think we should probably stay consistent with that. So I would recommend that we include that fence, same height and same color, so it keeps the aesthetics of the building.
Thank you. One thing I will mention about that, one of the questions Planning Commission had also was if they decided that to not go with the fence, is that something that council can amend? And as I told them, council can amend the conditions, add or delete to those conditions as they choose.
Councilmember Sattel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Your six foot that you said was gonna be remaining for pedestrians on the sidewalk, is that six foot from the curb only? Or does it include the post? Is it six foot between the post and up there where their tables would be? Because otherwise, it's like there's only like a foot or foot and a half on the outside, and if it's raining, people have to actually walk out on the edge, and that's a problem with the one with the fence right now. I think the fence actually takes up too much area and doesn't allow citizens or people, pedestrians, to walk in that area under the overhang and stay out of the rain when necessary. So I'm just, I like the idea of a fence though over there, but maybe the other one's out a little too far. And, but I think either it needs to be a fence or there needs to be some painting on the concrete that says, this is the limitation, because otherwise, they look at the, hey, they can, they can stand up and have their drink and go all the way out to the curb and maybe even walk all the way out to the car and back, and that's not appropriate. So the other thing on the hours, I wanted to ask, what do we allow for the other establishments on this here same block? For the hours, do we allow all the way to go to midnight or not?
To address the hours, so for Lehman's Landing to the east, their hours were until 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and midnight Friday and Saturday. So that was their limitation that was approved. And regarding, I believe you asked about the six-foot clear pedestrian, that would include that pillar on the far left side. They would have to, they'd have to allow for it throughout the entire area, at least six feet. The way the applicant is proposing is that would be on the curb side. It wouldn't, they wouldn't have their tables out close to the curb. They'd be up again, which the one condition addresses, be up against the wall. So that, as I stated, is 13 feet from the wall to the back of the curb. So the maximum they could come out from that wall would be seven feet.
Which leaves how much space between the column and the tables for people to walk through there?
They'd be required to maintain six feet.
Okay, so when you, this current picture, so like down there by the brick, they can't put any tables, because that's already the area, but then this other area is still another area for walking through there.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, that's fine. I do believe that either should be a fence or some kind of marking on it to show the limitation, because we're, they're only allowed to do that out in that area right there in a confined area, just like, you know, El McGay and the others like that. That's all fencing areas, you know, so that's all.
Councilmember Norris?
Thank you, Mayor. I also agree. I said that we need to have a division if they want this. You know, of course, it is a little apples and oranges. This is a very smaller area than Lehman's Landing. Lehman's Landing has two entrances, which the entrance to their, of divided, are their outside seating. You can't access that from the outside. You have to go in and come out. I think this is really a very small area for that. And I just wanted to question, the picture that you have, is that just gonna be one big long table with chairs, like a picnic table?
No.
It's gonna be three tables? Jammed up against the wall?
The special use permit that was approved in 2012 limited it to three tables with four chairs each. And that does not change. It's the maximum of three tables, four chairs each. And so that really would define it to that limitation.
Well, with the, with the business right next door, I think that would be drifting. So I think that we do need to have a division if that's what they want to have. I think they need to have their assigned area, and I need, we need a fence there. Thank you.
Councilmember Hood?
If we approve a different timeframe for this special use permit, do we need to go back and amend the special use permit for Lehman's if they want?
Well, since Lehman's is, and Mr. Lenbrooker, jump in if I'm incorrect. Since Lehman's Landing is operating under their own special use permit that was approved in 2007 and amended in 2017, that's what they're allowed to operate under. Any change to it would have to come based on their petition to the city.
Wouldn't it be appropriate if we kept the timeframe the same? Because if they take it all the way till midnight on Sunday, I think that's when they have to close. If I'm not mistaken, they can't serve liquor after midnight on Sunday night.
The conditions were a recommendation, and it's at the discretion of council to modify them, delete or add to them?
Then I would recommend that we make the timeframe consistent with the other business.
Second?
So I believe this would be done during the second consideration. Okay.
That would be my request. If, so if the conditions are to be amended, or if the council provides some direction to be discussed when we vote, when it's voted on by council, but I could draft some language too, to help assist with that as well.
Councilmember Westy?
I was, this is more comment than question, I guess, but I know one thing I constantly hear from people around where I'm at is they want places to be able to go to and eat, and they wanna have places they can eat outside. So I love this idea. The more outdoor seating, the better, in my opinion. I don't, excuse me, I don't know if I fully agree with the other council members with the fence, because the fence works for Lehman's, but as it was brought up, Lehman's is a much larger storefront. They have two doors that you can go into. And I do believe that you actually can get into the fenced area without going inside. I believe they have a gate on the right side of that fence, if I do remember correctly. I also am okay with them having different hours than Lehman's Landing, because Lehman's Landing can always come and petition to have their special use permit updated to match this. If we say it has to match them, well, that means that I guess we're never gonna change those hours, because unless they would both have to have new special use permits to change those hours. So if Still on the Rocks ends up putting in for these hours, then Lehman's can definitely come in and ask to have their hours extended. So that's just my views on this particular special use permit. Thank you.
Councilmember Luther?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know when the kitchen closes in this establishment?
I don't have that information, but the applicant is here and could answer that.
I'll be asking the applicant to come forward after Mr. Grayton's finished. Councilmember Iwannu? Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick comment. I would like, I agree with Chief Hood. I would like to see consistent hours with Lehman's Landing. I'd like for them to have the same hours and not different, so. That's just my comment on that.
Mr. Graytons? In your word, you say that food and beverages, do we need to specify alcoholic beverages? Or is it already included in the original SUP?
That's, one moment. So since the original special use permit, it didn't specifically say alcoholic beverages, but I think since it was a restaurant and bar, it was implied. If it helps add clarity, that could be added as a modification.
Well, in my view, if it says beverages, it includes alcoholic beverages, if they have a liquor license to serve alcoholic beverages. So I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Thank you. Any further questions by council? Thank you, Mr. Graytons. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Please state your name and address to the city clerk.
Yes, hello. Centria Weekly is my name. The address is 12344 Natural Bridge Road.
Please raise your right hand, let this swear you in, since it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any comments or?
Well, there was a question asked about what time the kitchen closed. So, excuse me, Monday through Saturday, 12:30, and on Sunday, 11:30. And the reason why we do want the outside seating is because we have a lot of customers who enjoy being outside, eating, drinking. They smoke cigarettes sometime, and they be in the office all day long. So just to get outside when the weather feel good is just something that they like to do. And, you know, when they, we didn't know that we couldn't, but when we found out that we couldn't sit outside, we got rid of the tables and the chairs. We was in compliant all the way.
Council, you have questions? There's one. Councilmember Luther?
Yes, could you, again, the kitchen hours, you said Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Saturday closed at 12:30.
A.M. Correct.
And on Sunday, 11:30.
Any further?
Yes, can I continue?
Yes, continue.
Yes, I wondered, since there have been some safety concerns, and that's a concern that I have cited by the police, the chief, what, what are you doing for, to enhance security?
We do have security. We have a security team.
Can you describe that?
Well, we also, we have two security guards. One stands at the door. We search everyone that comes in. Even if they leave out and they re-enter, we search them again. One is in the inside, just making sure everything is just running smoothly at the time of operation. When we close, the security guard usually don't leave until we leave out the door for our safety.
Right, but I, but I'm thinking that people could stay. People could stay outside after you leave, correct? And there wouldn't be anybody there?
No, we clear the front. Security would make sure that everybody is gone. If you guys approve us for this specialty permit, we will make sure no one is hanging outside after the hours that we are supposed to be closed anyway. No, we don't want them outside, no way. You know, not after 1:30. And I'm not, as far as in the times that you guys are discussing, we wouldn't have a problem if we had to do the same time as the other bar for the outdoor seating. If it's 11 o'clock, that's fine with us.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this special use permit? I see none. Anybody that would like to come forward and speak against this special use permit? I see none. No further questions? This public hearing is closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under letter K, we have a bid acceptance. Councilmember Luther?
Lou?
Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ASP Enterprises as the supplier of stormwater pipe for a period of approximately six months in accordance with their bid of November 6, 2024.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the bid for the ASP. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Any further dialogue? I see none. Okay. It passes.
I'm sorry, did I miss it? Was there a vote?
No.
Okay.
Did you, I motioned?
I did a motion.
Okay. Got a second?
Yeah, we need a vote.
Kathy was second.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be roll.
Yeah, he did a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. That's my fault. I apologize. I missed it.
Next item on the agenda, of course, we deleted bill number 6462. So consideration of new bills, bill number 6463, councilmember Luther?
Move for first reading of bill number 6463. Second.
Motion's made and seconded for first reading of bill number 6433. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with TSI Global Companies for the CAT 6 installation and IP camera mountings in an amount of $33,580.50. The project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $7,000. $7,000. Move to suspend council rules for a second consideration of bill number 6463.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to suspend council rules for second consideration of bill number 6463. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please proceed.
Yes, move for second consideration of bill number 6463.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for second consideration of bill number 6463. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto with TSI Global Companies for the CAT 6 installation and IP camera mountings in an amount of $33,580.50. The project budget includes a contingency in the amount of $7,000. Move that bill number 6463 become ordinance number 2448.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. That bill number 6463 become ordinance 24-48. Discussion. Councilmember Luther?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wondered if we could get a little information about this project in terms of the scope of the project and how many cameras we're talking about. This is an installation and some cabling. How old are the ones that are being replaced? Are we talking new, refurbished? Where will they be going, and really the difference in the bids? Just a little bit of general information.
Mr. Gunn?
Sure. To start with, currently, there is 42 existing cameras that we have at City Hall. With this proposal, we will be replacing those 42 and adding 11 additional cameras. Of those 11, four of them will be outside the building, so we're gonna have four brand-new cameras outside the building, and these are the special cameras. Chief, jump in here if I mess up anything. They're pan tilt zoom cameras. Some of them have the capability of 40 times optical zoom. So there's gonna be one right out in front of City Hall, kind of right-centered, that you can see up and down Natural Bridge. There'll be another one right outside the doors here, kind of overlooking the parking lot, and they have complete control. The police will, as far as being able to operate those. Two of them even have these little windshield wipers on them. They're pretty sophisticated cameras. The other cameras that we are going outside are like 360 cameras, or kind of like four cameras in one, and you put them in the corners, and you could look down the sides of the building and everything. Now, when the building was constructed, it wasn't like these were missed. I would say over the last 15 years, there's been a lot of changes as far as how the public buildings are being used. For instance, if you were to come up to City Hall on Friday afternoon, you would probably notice a lot of families swapping kids between parents or divorced parents. And that's all being mandated by the courts that you come to a public place. So we have cam, we need additional cameras and new cameras just to kind of keep track of the parking lots and anything that goes on around here. Now, the 11 additional cameras, that went, came through a pretty lengthy process. It wasn't just Public Works and Ty Engineering, who was the engineer that we hired to help us pull this together. We had several meetings with the police department, and we looked at everything. It seemed like every time we met, I was adding one or two more cameras to someplace, but I'm glad we did it because I can justify the locations of all the new cameras that we've added through our probably four months' worth of looking at everything and walking around the building. I wish Tom was here to talk about it a little bit more. This is a project he's really kind of embraced. He worked with a company called IC Real Time, and they gave us pretty much wholesale prices on all these cameras. So we're actually getting the cameras a lot cheaper than any of the other companies getting actually sell them to us. They were kind of surprised at the deals we were getting from the IC Real Time place. But Tom's gonna be programming the cameras. He actually already has them all downstairs. He's been working on them. I guess you have to type in IP addresses to each camera, so every camera. You have to program so it knows kind of its own address, and then the computer can kind of ping it, and then you can pull it, and when it tapes or records stuff, the computer always knows what camera's being used at that point in time. So I know Tom's been really proud of him, all the work he's done. So if you've got a couple hours, you wanna go talk to Tom about cameras, you're more than welcome to go downstairs, and he'll show you a whole bunch of them, so. Let's see, I think that should be about it. We did have the four different companies a bid on it. There was kind of a big spread in price, which always kind of worries me. When you have the low bidder being around $34,000, and you have the high bid being $92,000, you kind of start thinking, boy, what did somebody miss? So I started talking with everyone, and I started with the high bid. Basically, the high bidder, we had pre-construction meeting, when they come in, they walk around, kind of see the project. They can go downstairs as long as they're accompanied. They really didn't pay attention to what they were supposed to do, because they plugged in a whole bunch of extra stuff that you really didn't need. For instance, their material cost was probably three times as high as everybody else's. They were about 15,000 feet of new cable they were pulling through. The other people were bidding somewhere between 4,000 to 5,000 feet of cable. So basically, you just had somebody say, okay, we got this many cameras, you better throw this much cable at it or CAT 6 at it. Plus, the way that they're supposed to be doing is they're running the cable for Tom. That's all CAT 6 cable. And Tom's gonna be there the whole time. We already have the cameras, so you have to help Tom mount them. But Tom's gonna be zooming them in, making sure they're all focused properly. He's got these special tools. He can plug into the cameras while you're still on the lift. So there's really no need for testing or anything. As the progress goes, he's gonna be able to install the cameras that day without needing to come back and do testing. For instance, the high bidder, they plugged in 80 hours of testing and camera adjustments at the end of the contract. Well, yeah, if you start plugging in an extra two to three weeks of somebody coming out, or one or two guys with equipment just to test cameras, yeah, you're gonna be really high. Also, it's intended that you pull out the old cable as you string in the new cable. They plugged in 60 hours of demo just to remove all the old cable. Well, that's part of pulling the new cable to get rid of the old stuff. And we're not gonna be up there with magnifying glasses to make sure you got every little piece of it, but at the same time, as you're pulling the old stuff, you can get the new stuff through. You can easily get rid of the old stuff. So as we kind of backed into how they were doing stuff, a couple of other people, they had just one person on a man lift, where other people had scaffolding. Well, yeah, if I can get a little battery-operated man lift versus having to play scaffolding all around, it's gonna take more time. So there's reasons why we have pretty much two people that were pretty close together and two high bidders. TSI has done several of these retrofits. I think they're more used to going in and pulling new cable in an existing structure where you had somebody like Guarantee, which probably is used to doing brand-new construction. So coming into an existing facility probably did worry them a little bit. That's why you saw them throw some extra time and money at it, just to make sure they didn't lose anything. I think that should be your last question, I think. I hope. I'm running out of answers.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I do have one. Is it true that some of the cameras here currently in use came from the old City Hall and police department?
Yes, and that was part of, they were either newer cameras, or they were cameras that had been replaced in a relatively short time that we were at the old facility before we came here, and it was just a cost-cutting move that they had.
Councilmember Norris?
I just, can it get started soon as we, how quickly?
Pretty quick, because all the CAT 6 cable is relatively easy to get. Tom already has all the cameras downstairs. He's been chomping at the bit to get going on it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea of us updating our technology, and along those lines, I did get a chance to see Tom's presentation of the cameras and the work he's been doing. Yes, I agree. He's very proud of it, and as he should be. He did show me one thing that was particularly interesting to me was that he's doing some customization of a few of the cameras, and the intern that he has during the summer was able to do some 3D printing for a piece on that customization. It's pretty interesting. So maybe we also need to get Tom a 3D printer at some point.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sattell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wishy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Iwana?
Aye.
Councilmember Lou?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number 6463 becomes ordinance 24-48. Next item, consideration of bill number 6464. First consideration, councilmember Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion for first reading of bill 6464.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for first consideration of bill number 6464. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 24-PZ-06, amending special use permit ordinance number 12-43 to expand the duration of outdoor seating associated with the restaurant and bar located at 12344 Natural Bridge Road. I make a motion to table bill 6464.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table bill number 6464. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6464 is tabled. Next item, first consideration of bill number 6465. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for first reading of bill number 6465.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for first consideration of bill number 6465. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri approving participation in the federal 340B drug pricing program for DePaul Hospital. Move that, move to table bill number 6465.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table bill number 6465. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number 6465 is tabled. We have no discussion items. Next item on the agenda is the attorney's report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council of Communications, I will start with councilmember Patel this evening.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Iwana?
Thank you, and I have nothing as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sattell?
Thank you, Mayor. Since councilmember Patel needs to leave early, I won't talk either. Thank you.
Aw, man, make me feel guilty.
Councilmember Wishy?
Thank you, Mayor. Since councilmember Patel needs to leave early, I'm going to actually talk. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I appreciate it, and hopefully, everybody had a good Halloween. I know we ended up having between 60 and 75-ish kids to my house, so that was pretty cool, and brought back the whole idea of giving out hot dogs for Halloween, which is always a hit with a lot of the people, so. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. But Halloween on Avery this year was a hallmark moment. For anybody that missed it, come back next year. We had a ball. The, so I did attend the design and review meeting last night, and it was so much fun. I've got pictures of signs and elevations of all the new businesses coming in. St. Louis Fish and Chicken, MOVa, the Small Sliders, we've all seen that going up. Isn't that wonderful? And a few other places. Oh, and the Arch Pickleball area. So if you want to see what they look like, I have some pictures of that. And thank you for the second reading for the installation of the new video cameras. I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Lou?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick shout-out to a resident of Bridgeton. I was out either picking up or putting out the Ward 3 meeting signs a couple of weeks ago, and I was on Mark Twain Lane, and came across a lady who was picking up trash down in the newly mowed ditch. Thank you very much, MoDOT, and Robert Gunn for getting that to happen. I stopped to talk with the lady, and I offered her a safety vest. She said she has about 80 of them at home. She gets hot, so she declined that. But she did tell me her name was Jeanette, and she lives in Harmon Estates. And she's been cleaning up Mark Twain Lane and the areas around I-70, the interchanges, for at least 18 years, is what she said. I asked her if she'd be willing to come to a council meeting and be recognized, and she declined. As a matter of fact, she wouldn't even give me her last name. I think, however, that she deserves recognition. So Jeanette in Harmon Estates, thank you very much for all of the work you're doing to be a good community member.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
But cool, I'll talk really fast, promise. I just wanted to ask if Mr. Bookout could explain that ordinance 6465 regarding DePaul Hospital and that federal 340B drug pricing. I was a little confused about that. And on a sad note, we lost a wonderful lady, Chris Gaston, battled a long illness. She was a longtime resident. She battled her illness with grace and dignity. My deepest sympathy to her husband, Jim, and family. The funeral was on last Saturday. She will be missed. I worked with her when we volunteered at Pattonville School with her girls, so always, always had a smile on her face. I do want to say I did miss the Small Sliders, dropped the can, but we, after the funeral, we drove around there, and I got to catch up with the franchise owner, Beau Herbert. He is bringing such excitement. I can't wait for the company to come in, the youth of all of them, all the owners. It's just gonna be a fun. I know it's another fast food, but, you know, a lot of people like fast food, and it's going to be, you know, with the hamburger and a very simple menu. But anyway, I, and then also, we made a trip down to BMAC. What a great event, the tons of trucks. It was a beautiful day, well-attended, dump trucks, fire trucks, police cars, a new, our new crime van, school buses, the bubble machine. Oh, the kids, it was, it was well-attended. Park staff, you did a wonderful job. I do appreciate that, and thanks, a shout-out to Tara. Also attended the chili cook-off. Sorry, Brendan. Fire Department won the award. So much for all, it was, but it was another great success. The park staff, the senior division, Denise, did a wonderful job. And also, I want to thank all the staff preparing the budget for 2025. I need a special appreciation to Christine Bodes. Thank you. Good luck. Bye.
Councilmember Hood?
Okay, we had our pension commission meeting, and I will tell you that the pension is in very good shape. And at budget time, we will be bringing forth a recommendation for the annual contribution. And on a sad note, we lost one of our own. Officer Gary Rom passed away, and he will be laid out on Friday. And just please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. He served this city well, as long, and with the city of Woodson Terrace, and he's gonna be missed.
Thank you. Staff reports? I'll start with Mr. Brendan King.
We have the Feed the Masses Food Drive going on the month of November. This is one area of park and rec departments. There's about twenty-five of us that engage in a friendly charity competition to see who can get the most donations. We've got a drop-off here and at the rec center, so the entire month of November. Upcoming event, we've got the Veterans Breakfast on Friday, the eighth, from eight-thirty to ten a.m., put on by rec center staff. Registration is full, but we're looking forward to hosting those veterans and their families this weekend. Quick grant updates, Phase One of Gentry Park, they were making great progress. For a couple of weeks, we had great weather, and the rain hit, so they're taking a little bit of a break this week, but hopefully, back at it next week. And last week, we were, did find out we were awarded the grant for Phase Two at Gentry Park, so that was, that was exciting. That'll be three in a row for us, which is, which is great. And then we have the holiday tree lighting. It's Friday, December sixth, six to eight p.m. Staff was doing some tree shopping this week, and we're finalizing the event details, but really looking forward to that. The digital reader board at McKelvey Park, it's been operational for a couple of weeks now, so there was a little bit of a learning curve with staff, kind of learning how to get that dialed in and make sure the font sizes are right and all that. But I think we've got it pretty well set up now, but I will check it after this and make sure it looks good at night. Haven't seen it at night yet, so it's all I've got.
Thank you. Chief?
I just wanted to add, echo what Chief Hood had said about Officer Rom. He retired in two thousand eight, I believe, from the Police Department, but he was, he was a great officer, and for those of you that knew him, he did do the ordinance officer. He was doing that for a number of years prior to his retirement. Also, served our country in Vietnam, did a couple tours of duty, and Vietnam saw very hard combat over there. Unfortunately, when he came back to the States, he was hired by Woodson Terrace, and he was actually shot on a traffic stop five times. And Woodson Terrace, after being in hard combat in Vietnam, we were fortunate to get him on our department in the early eighties, and he's going to be sorely missed, but I just wanted to pass that along, condolences to his family as well, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gunn?
Keep your fingers crossed. I think the sign on the front of the building is fixed now. They were out here today for about an hour and a half changing out the power supply, so if it's still flashing or if it's blinking, let me know, and we'll bring him back out again. That's all I have.
Mr. Bookout?
Yes, just to answer the question regarding this three-fourty-B, this is actually a request by representatives of DePaul Hospital, and it is a federal drug discount pricing program, and this is a program for folks in the community that don't qualify for the Social Security Act or the state plans, Medicare or Medicaid. And I know from what they've provided, some of the ministries over in DePaul Hospital want to provide this program, and one of the requirements is that they have an agreement with the local governing body in order to provide that pricing for the community. They do have an agreement with, for their St. Mary's Hospital in Richmond Heights, and then St. Joseph and St. Charles, City of St. Charles. It's my understanding that they did years ago have an agreement with the city. We can't, I can't find that. I think that was done under Mayor Bauer's administration. I know I talked to David about this, and we couldn't locate it, so that's just a little bit of background. If you need any more information, I'll be glad to provide it. I do want to say that David and I are going to be meeting to talk about this a little bit more, so there may be some recommended changes by the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we're down to me, the mayor's report. First, Mr. Pinson. Can you hear me? Okay. Councilmember Luther reconvene the council sub, council rule subcommittee meeting, and Mr. Hood is the chairman of that. If you would, talk with him and tell him what your concerns are regarding council, and they have a meeting coming up before the end of the year regarding council rule changes, and if they agree to it, they can make changes, you know, I understand you might want them to limit the amount of time that they speak during their time to speak and not make political statements, but speak with Councilmember Hood, and he'll be happy to talk with you about that, and he'll bring that to his committee. Thank you. I learned last week for the first time that Mr. Sarah passed away October the seventh. I was unaware of that. I did go to the restaurant that night to offer my sympathy to his wife and daughter. He's a longtime resident here in Bridgeton on Old St. Charles Road, even though his restaurant is in Maryland Heights, but keep his family in your prayers in the days ahead. Thank you. And looking forward to the budget sessions tomorrow and also next week. Don't forget, tomorrow night, council meets at five-thirty. The budget meeting starts at six. First two items on the agenda are the police and Public Works, and then next week will be parks, legislation, legislative, executive, and what other items we need to discuss, capital improvements, things like that. So, they're open meetings. You're welcome to come and attend. They're both at six p.m., one tomorrow night and one next week, November the thirteenth. We have a lot of work to do, but we'll get it done. I do want to say that the first Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting was last week. I was very pleased. Four out of the five resident members attended. The one that didn't was Mr. Tornatory, and I talked with him yesterday. He's planning on being at the next one that is scheduled for November twenty-fifth, and we also had two of the auxiliary members, they're non-residents, they were in attendance also, but there's a lot of energy there, there's a lot of experience from different areas in life and business, and I'm looking forward with, working with them, you know, in the coming years, hopefully. But they all agreed that we need to create an inviting environment here in Bridgeton to attract new businesses and residents. We need to come up with a vision statement for the Economic Development Commission. They're aware now of other websites that other municipalities have, and they're going to research their economic development pages and strategies. They do want to set up or step up or upgrade the website and social media advertising. And what's the goal of this commission? Probably to generate more revenue, and we need to define a process on how to get there. Kathy Luther, I think, summed it up best when she spoke at the end and said, we're all part of the new Bridgeton going forward, so I'm excited, they're excited, we're all excited, so hopefully, some good things will be happening here in the very near future. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.